My phone.
Let me see.
Give me thirty seconds. So that my phone doesn't ring.
Yeah, we're good. You good?
Yep.
Jamie, it's nice to see you.
I know.
As opposed to remote.
I know, but I like the remote still.
I'm sure you do.
Okay.
You can wear a jammy sear.
It's nicer to see you, though.
So, it's six thirty on Thursday, December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board meeting to order. I'd also like to remind everyone that recording and taping, a notification is required by law. The town may audio or video, and we do, as you can see. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. Anybody in the audience going to record anything today? So, a couple of things that I'd like to speak to, a couple of points of order. The last meeting we had, I think we could have done things a little better. And I would like to remind everyone, please ask for permission to speak so that we're not being disrespectful of one another and for the folks that are in the audience. I think that's a very, very important thing. I'd like to have input from everybody, right? It's not just one or two people, but all of us as a board and all of you that are sitting here watching this. And I really appreciate everybody's presence. One of the things that I will say is that we're going to be a kinder, gentler board, but we're going to do what's right for the town of Harwich. And we're very much looking forward to moving on into two thousand and nineteen. I'd also like to thank Jim Atkinson, who has resigned, that we're a service to the planning board, and we certainly appreciate Jim. And we'll be talking more about that perhaps later in the meeting or in the meetings to come. So with that, we've got a part A of the public hearing. We don't have any. We've got some under the public meeting, some new business. A few issues, PB two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-seven, Osprey Landing LLC. B, PB two thousand and eighteen dash thirteen, Eastward Home Business Trust. C, the informal discussion, Eastward Companies. D, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen coming up on January seventh. And then we've got some old business to talk about, which includes the zoning review for accessory apartments, apartments versus bedrooms and accessory structures, sign code, A-frame, signs and fines, retaining walls for septic systems and building height floodplain. And then, of course, briefings and reports by board members. So with that, Charlene.
The first item, PB two thousand and eighteen thirty-seven, Osprey Landing LLC. You may recall this was a rescission plan that was approved by the board. It has made it through the twenty-day appeal period without any appeals being taken, and they are now seeking endorsement of that plan. And there is no covenant because they're not creating a road. They're just making two lots and a road into one big lot.
Okay.
Do you have the plan for our signature?
It's, yep, it's over there.
Do we, we don't have to vote or anything?
Yes, you do. You need to vote to endorse the plans.
Okay, do I?
Move to endorse, move to endorse the plan.
Second.
In PB two thousand and eighteen thirty-seven.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, we don't need to take a roll call. We'll just take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have one person absent this evening.
The Mylar, which is the clacky one, needs to be signed with a special pen. Special pen. Other ones can be signed with any color you choose. These are for us.
Okay.
How many on the paper? Charlene, two?
Charlene, am I legal now?
You are legal now.
Okay.
He gets a sign. And I'll fill in dates. And I've already lost the elastic.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Hey, David.
Good.
So there's two, Joe.
Yeah.
Is your eyes on this system?
No.
Okay.
We're good.
We're good. Okay, so we're good on Osprey. Next, we have PB two thousand and eighteen, Eastward Home Trust seeks approval and endorsement.
Hi, Susan Ladeau from Eastward Companies with Phil Marsh. And we're here tonight to ask for a swap of lots. Of sorts. The board released four, five lots, but four that we're allowed to build on as a maximum per the Board of Health a few months ago. And we've had some buyers come along, and they're interested in a lot that was not released. So we're here asking for a swap. So a release of Lot Three, and we'd like to return Lot Two to the covenant. And so we provided the, well, we've provided one of the documents, but Charlene's prepared the other, I believe, for those.
Charlene?
Yep, so the board essentially needs to take two votes. One would be to approve and endorse a new planning board covenant, agreement and covenant for Lot Two of the Bascom Hollow subdivision. And vote two would be to approve and endorse the release of Lot Three from the planning board agreement and covenant recorded in Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Book three-one-three-seven-oh, page forty-nine.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions by any members of the planning board? Joe?
Move to approve and endorse to place Lot Two back into the covenant in PB two thousand and eighteen thirteen.
Okay. Second that, okay.
Can I offer an amendment?
Yes.
Can we also move to approve the new covenant? Is there a new covenant?
If you want to make it simple, you can just say, so moved on what Charlene previously said.
Which would be both items, one and two?
Which would be both items at the same time, if you wanted to do that.
Be acceptable to me?
Will you accept the amendment?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Sir?
I would like to bring to the board's attention, because some members may not be familiar or may not remember. This subdivision is an eight-lot approved subdivision that is along Route thirty-nine north of the one thirty-nine, or the thirty-nine, one thirty-seven intersection. And the Board of Health issue, not, it's really not an issue, condition, was that they felt that the pipe for the sewer was going to be there in, what, eighteen months to two years, right? The pipe is going to Chatham. So they said, it was really the Board of Health that conditioned the release of lots to be four, right?
Yes.
Out of the eight-lot subdivision. And, but I wanted the board to know that the road is complete, the top coat of the paving is done, we've complied with everything required to build the road. The only remaining part of the road are the side shoulders and the loam and seed, which really can't take place now until the spring. But I wanted the board to know about why we were restricted, or remind the board to the four lots. It was because of the Board of Health. And once the, once the pipe is in, they'll release the other four lots. And this, this obviated the requirement to have to do a nitrogen removable, nitrogen removal system for the subdivision because we're in the Pleasant Bay watershed.
Watershed.
That's all correct, right?
Zone two.
Yep.
And a zone two.
So, so.
But just to let you know.
Yeah, Bill, I, where exactly is this?
Well, it's about a, it's about a, maybe a half mile northeast of the one thirty-seven, thirty-nine intersection where the new fire department's being built.
Right, right in there.
On the left.
Just past the post office.
Just past the post office. Oh, yeah.
Correct, yeah, just past the post office on the left.
I know exactly where that is.
And the road's in there.
It's there. Everything's there.
The road's in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the top coat of paving was done early this week on the warmer day, and we're ready to go.
I was tempted to drive up it the other day, but you had some cones up there, so I didn't do it.
Joe, you must have gotten there right after they finished, but you can go in there now.
Okay.
I'm doing, I'm doing.
You sound like me.
I do what I'm told to do.
Good man.
Most of the time.
So the, things are moving forward?
Yes.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I think your project down on the waterfront has come along brilliantly.
The harbor.
Yes.
Yes, I have very good people in my office, very good people.
And you have had a lot of your people down there.
Yes.
On various.
A lot of the time.
I ride around in the morning when I go get my coffee, and I always swing by there to see what's happened in the last few hours, you know?
What a wonderful improvement for basically the crown jewel of the town.
Oh, it's, it's great. And the, and the blacktop where you put in on, on the right, as you face it, on the right-hand side.
Right.
That just makes it, I think.
Oh, the maintenance building, you know, the harbor master, and then snack shack. I mean, it's all going to be so nice.
It looks so much better.
Yes.
That's a big improvement.
That and the water side is like huge, really nice. Nicely done.
You know, just out of curiosity, how many artist shacks they're planning to put in that strip?
Four or five. Through you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies.
There's one there now.
No.
There's a shaft.
That's the snack shack, Joe.
No, no, the snack shack's up front, right?
That's for sale of tickets.
The one that's there now.
For sale of tickets.
I got you.
So it would look kind of like Orleans with the various, well, I think it's going to look a little bit like Hyannis.
More like Hyannis, actually, yeah.
Okay. Well, good. Took a while, but all right.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, we got a, the town took a long one.
Right, I didn't mean.
And then, and then we got, we got a tough late start in the winter last year. Tough, tough time to start.
Yep.
I'm going to slow things down. It's all right.
Talk about something else while we do this.
Well, we're, I mean.
Not agendaed on anything else.
We're good. The next, the next step is.
She, she needs to notarize before she can get going.
Yeah. We'll just do what we have to do, and we're good. We're actually ahead of schedule.
I like that.
I like that a lot.
Ahead of schedule's a very nice thing. And unusual.
It is for this.
When, why she's doing that, when do you expect to be in the harbor?
Do you know better than I know?
I don't know about the snack shack, but I thought the other buildings were just about there.
They look, that's why, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing the connection stuff and some final paving and some trenching. We were there today doing that. Very close. Very, very close.
The, the building that's between the Downey property and the, and kind of the, on the left-hand side, when you go in, to the right of the maintenance building, but at the beginning of the parking lot, kind of towards the left. Is that the ticket?
That's the ticket booth.
Oh, yeah.
For the?
For the ferry.
Ferry.
Antifa Ferry. Yep.
Before the little.
That's what I thought you were talking about, and then I wasn't sure.
That was just Bill.
Yes.
Yeah. And the, the structure that's in the front lot, that's going to be the maintenance structure for the harbor master.
Back where, where, what was it, Downey's garage?
The old pizza place.
That's the maintenance garage.
Yeah.
Built a little higher because of the flood.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Now I'm looking at this.
Oh, no, 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 you're notarizing.
That's what I thought, but I was looking for another, and I didn't see.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
No, okay.
Why don't you take the, actually, we'll do, just do the one, and then we'll just get a copy.
Okay. Sorry about that. I looked at it, and I was like, wait a second.
So we just still need to get a copy of that one.
Okay.
Somebody with a truck with a dump on the, took out a pole in the middle of the parking lot. They had a bunch of transformers.
Brother. I'm waiting to see if somebody from across the street parks in the new parking.
Auto Cape Health Services?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What a nice addition to the town that is.
Looks to me, I, I haven't been in there, but it looks to me like people are using it from the day it opened.
Yeah.
When I say that, I see all the cars in the parking lot and so forth, and people coming and going, and.
I never heard that.
They have a lot of office people there on the second floor.
Do they?
You can start, I'm going to go make a quick copy.
Joe, you should go in the building and just walk through.
Is that right?
Yeah, you'd be very, we went to their open house. Susan and I went to their open house.
I'm trying to do my part to help.
And it's very impressive.
Doing a great job.
Very, very, very nicely done, and a nice addition to the town.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think it's great.
Close by.
So if it's, if it's okay, would you like to begin talking about the Lot Seven Deerfield Road commercial development project?
We're here on an informal basis tonight, but I just have a little handout. We'll see what we're thinking about as far as architecture and building. Some of the building plans.
Thank you.
So this is Lot Seven Deerfield Road in the industrial road that we sell on. And Lot Seven is a great corner. And let me just flip this up.
And this is.
Cludier is over there. Allen's Landscaping just finished a building adjacent to Allen's Landscaping. And this is our lot on the corner of Depot.
This right across from the old entrance to Stonewood.
Okay.
Yeah. And so we've, we've been trying to figure out what to do with the, a site out here, and we've gotten some calls and demand for some space and storage space, which we've experienced in Chatham. We've developed some industrial buildings over on Enterprise Drive. And so we've looked at this lot, and it's a, thank you, a semi-tough lot to develop. So we're trying to figure out, how can we maximize what we can do on this lot to accommodate whatever need there is for storage, as well as provide parking, and of course, make it look nice, even though it's an industrial area at the same time. So we've proposed, just to get to my letter that I submitted to the board. We're proposing a five thousand five hundred eighty square foot industrial metal building that'll accommodate industrial utility or other uses, but we're anticipating storage demand. Twelve parking spaces, where six spaces are required for the proposed use. And I should lead in by saying that Bill and I met with Charlene and several other department heads a few weeks ago to discuss this and to get some feedback. And we talked about what we've proposed as far as parking numbers. And four of the spaces beyond the eight within the site would, are proposed to be backing out onto the subdivision road or Deerfield Road. Which is discouraged by the bylaw. And we, and we looked at the feedback that we did get from Charlene, the other department heads, thought about some alternatives, and we just, you know, we like, we like what we have here. And as we discussed with Charlene that day, we, the Enterprise Drive buildings we have, I can show you photos if you're not familiar with the site, they all back out onto roads or the road. And it's a very busy industrial subdivision. So we, we thought, you know, we'll stay with what we have, get the feedback from the board, see what your feeling is on whether you would waive that requirement. But otherwise, again, four of the spaces would propose backing out. The building coverage is at just under twenty-eight percent, where a maximum of forty percent is allowed, and site coverage is at sixty point five percent, where seventy percent is allowed. And so those are the.
We're under on those.
Yeah, we are, we're under. So that's the bare minimum. I promised Charlene we'd keep it to about fifteen minutes at most, because she said you wanted to scoot out.
Simply, our biggest issue is, is we feel, as the owner of the land, we did not do the subdivision. Someone did the sub, the Manning Brothers, I think, did the subdivision in the seventies? Was that, was that?
No, it was nineteen eighty-nine.
In the eighties?
Yeah.
So, and then we bought the land after the subdivision plan was approved by a previous planning board. So the road comes in here like this and exits out on to Great Western Road, this Depot Road. And this, this site, there, this lot, number seven, has all of this, well, first of all, has frontage here in Depot, and we are restricted by your, by the planning board decision in nineteen eighty-nine of having no access along Depot Road. So now we have all of this frontage, and we're bound by that as a frontage for setback requirements, et cetera. So it's difficult to develop something that makes sense economically, financially, on this one half acre, half acre site. So we're worried that in the future, we're projecting a light industrial manufacturing and/or storage use. So we're compliant with your bylaw as to the number of spaces. But we, what we would like is a waiver for these four spaces to be able to back out, out on the Deerfield to come and to go. I don't think it's that bad, because this section of this road is really not very, very busy. One of Charlene's objections, and I understand it was, gee whiz, there's some curves in this road, but I still think, I know the site distance is more than adequate. Cludier is here. There's, we have an acre and a half or three half-acre lots up here that we think may be a gas, convenient, food. We don't know what that use may be someday. But we think that that use will be, not restricted, but common sense will be, they'll come and go from this entrance and not ever come down into this area. So we don't see a lot of traffic on Deerfield, and would like, in our formal site plan presentation review to you, to be able to put four spaces here for overflow in case it gets busy here and you need an extra space to park. So it's kind of that simple. Okay. So Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Any, any comments or questions by any of the various departments on?
From a Board of Health standpoint, there were no issues. There's no conservation issues. The building inspector just is mainly concerned about the construction of the building. As the planner, you know, Bill outlined the fact that I am concerned about backing out onto Deerfield Road. I just, I, I have my angst about that, and I know the building quite well that he's talking about over in Chatham. And my husband happens to work down the road, and I've gone down there, and it, it's not the best of situations. I mean, I don't think there's been any accidents there or anything, but people just know to slow down in that particular site. You know, if the board were so inclined, one of the things to do, you know, based on what they're talking about for use now, if they only need six spaces, the board does have a provision where you can approve those four spaces, but not have them build them.
Yep.
It can stay green until there, there is a real need to have additional spaces. Another suggestion that I had made, because they do have so much frontage here, they're kind of overabundanced with frontage. I had suggested, you know, looking at the site to see if there was a better way to, you know, situate the building and maybe have access from Depot and ask for a change in the previous board's decision. Which I don't, you know, know if they, they played with that. I'm guessing that they probably have. And then the other thing was, is there a possibility for a shared driveway with the, the parcel next door that the board approved a few years ago? I'm also concerned about a fifty-foot wide paved entrance. That is significantly wider than what the bylaw provides for. So I am a little bit concerned about that, you know? When, when you get really wide, people don't really pay attention to sticking to the left and, you know, to exit and sticking to the right to enter. And that, that's just one of the other concerns that, that I had.
So what?
It's a tough lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, it looks difficult.
You know, the way it's, it, it, it's a tough lot.
Did anybody from the Police Department weigh in on?
No. No, because it was only, usually it's just community development that meets, so it's building, health, conservation, and planning. Occasionally, Fire will sit in. He was not able to at that meeting, and, and Fire was not asked to participate at that point.
Any environmental concern?
None. No. Wetlands are across the street, so they're in, they're in good.
So what would the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Questions, Joe?
If I might, who's on Lot Eight? What's on Lot Eight?
Allen's Landscaping.
That's it?
It's like a, it's a metal.
Well, he does have a sign out that he has additional space more than he needs to be able to rent.
I think he's, if, if I might, he's got one extra unit in there that could be rented.
But this is, this is Allen's Landscaping here.
Okay.
And his entrance is here, and one of the things that Charlene, Susan and I talked about was asking Allen for an easement, which I think might be difficult, Charlie, but, is to come in here, then approach these spaces from Allen's property, such that he can back out here and then exit. And that was discussed.
And? And my other question is, is the reason why you need a fifty-foot opening, the access?
We could narrow that up, but we, we think, along with Clark Engineering, our engineer surveyor, think that to provide the best access to, we, we kind of see, we don't know, we're doing this in speculation, one, two, three units. So we thought the wider, the better. If you, and then when we discussed this with Charlene, when they developed Cludier, which was basically on a two lot, or two one-half acre lots, or one acre in total, with that condition or restriction, whatever it's called, that what they did is do an island, and they have basically a, maybe a twenty-five entrance, exit here and one here. And we could do the same thing. We could do an island and have two, but I think it's, doesn't, I think it's confusing.
I don't think you need it.
We would have, rather have one wider.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No.
So, one quick question for me initially. Is there any way the building could come closer to Deerfield and you could line your four parking spaces down the sideline of the property with Allen's Landscaping and then be able to swing them around and come out? That, that would be my only thought. I'm concerned with the backing out on the road, because although those are the buildings there, I do know there are two businesses on the other side of the street that are in and out with heavy equipment all the time. So there, there are buildings there, but they're shack, so. And I do see people using it as a cut-through from Great Western.
Oh, I've never seen that.
To, to beat the, to beat Depot.
Beat the center.
So, so people use that as a cut-through and, you know.
This?
Heavy Mack trucks don't stop as fast as.
There's a setback run right through here, so it's impossible for us to bring the building toward Deerfield and have any amount of square footage in the building.
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. David, you had a comment.
Yeah, I, I know it's probably unusual, but just thinking about how traffic works. If, if these are back-in-only spaces, the person's parking in them is on the road, any other vehicles will see them, they can stop, back into those spaces, and then when they pull out, it's, you know, when the dangerous occurrence occurs, that, they wouldn't have the problem, just like driving out of any driveway.
Well, we could have two signs that say, back in only.
Right, and, and I'm assuming that the people that. Right, and, and I'm assuming that the people that will be parking in, in these spaces are going to be familiar with the, with the businesses. For the most part, they're employees and so on.
Right.
So, so this is something that someone, it's not going to be a surprise to a patron that's coming in as a customer to have to do that. You know, it's, you've got to have training in order to make sure that works and...
And familiarity with the site.
It's just a thought.
Come and go of the site.
Yeah. I think it would reduce the safety problem. Wouldn't eliminate it, but it would reduce it.
Thanks, David. Craig, Chairman.
Is there a reason where six are required and you're trying to get to 12? Or just planning ahead?
Yeah, mostly because we can't exactly forecast the use of the individual spaces in the building. We think it's going to, because of our familiarity with building some metal buildings and on this site and listening to the phone calls, I think that whole thing is going to go to boat storage and I think there's rarely going to be a car there, but we don't know. And we don't want to run afoul of the planning board and of the town and all you said or any of that. So, we, we feel we should approach you today in an informal discussion to make sure we have plenty of spaces for the future, should a business locate there and they have four employees and they need that extra parking.
Is there, does zoning allow any type of retail operation there?
Special permit for retail.
Yes.
So you could have, end up with a convenience store with a lot of traffic.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine a convenience store in that location because there's not the visibility. But it, but you could get more, you could get a heavier use of parking than what we're projecting.
Retail would require significantly more parking than they'd be able to have on this lot.
Even with the additional...
Yeah, so any, any uses that would go into this building would have to comply with the parking requirements. So if there was a more intense use that wanted to go in...
They got to come and see you.
Yeah.
They'll have to.
Got it.
But I also think that if, if in fact there will be boat storage, then it would then make sense to have a nice wide opening, right? If you're backing a boat in or whatever, I think...
Bringing it on in a trailer.
Yeah.
Another question. Noting that we're parking, the two parking spaces that are designated with two, that's right in front of what appears to be a garage door.
Correct.
So this is essentially the tenant's got to manage...
Manage that.
Right.
And we, and frankly, David, we could add a couple of spaces that we don't show in the fronts of, of those segments. It's just that, we know, we don't know who that user's going to be. We think it's going to be all storage and if a guy's car is parked there and they need to open that door once every three or four months really for storage, then the guy moves his car and they use it and put the car back. You know, we're just trying to be upfront and honest and, and, and think about what might happen for the future.
You just might be interested in taking a ride down 28. I know you don't come down that end of the town too often. But Alan Haberman Reen, you know where the mill store was across from the liquor store?
Yep.
Well, Alan Haberman Reen is, I guess he's leasing it or something and he's storing boats there.
No, he bought it and went through this board.
Went through the board, but did he own it?
Yeah, he bought it.
He bought it.
Well, just to give you some idea that he's got storage there.
We should take a look at that.
That's outside. That's not in the building.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Charlene. Is there any way to use like Corral parking over there where they could...
Stack?
Stack, right, thank you.
If it were employee parking, the board has allowed that in the past. Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about the way the, the parking requirements are written is this board can waive anything to do with parking. It doesn't need to go to ZBA, it's all waivable.
Because my only thought was then you could stack the parking there or even where those four are, just where the two are beside it, stacked sideways that way, if you needed to.
Craig, Mr. Chairman.
I also have a concern Charlene expressed about backing out or even driving out, having a curb cutoff in Deerfield. And I will admit, I am one who constantly uses that as a cut through to avoid, to avoid the, because the Depot...
It's interesting.
That's a tough intersection. So it's a lot easier if you're going that way.
When there was road construction, it was...
Tougher now, right?
Very common.
But also a concern would be in terms of, and I don't know if this would be considered setting a precedent, but if we were to approve this, have we set a precedent? Because then five years ago, the person across the street wants to do the same kind of thing and now you've got cars backing out into each other. Is that a, could that ever happen?
There's no precedence in zoning.
There's no precedence in zoning.
Each, each individual lot is taken on its own merits.
Okay.
All right.
I'm the new kid on the block, so...
So...
But I still have that, I still express that as, as a concern and to, to your point about making it a back-in only, in theory, that's good, but I wonder, I mean, some people don't even like to back up. They don't use their mirrors and they just, they're against backing up. And to just to try to police that...
Yeah, no, it's, it's something that would only, only happen if, if everybody concerned knows it and does it.
And complies, right.
You know, that's a, that's a, it's a good point. I mean, I think from, anyway, from my experience, I'd say, boy, it would be nice, Bill, if you could come in from your, you know, get the, get the easement from your neighbor and come in.
Yeah, great.
I think that would help. But I, I mean, I just think there are a lot of good ideas being tossed around here, but I would sit down and talk with the, the police and see what they say about line of sight and those sorts of things.
We can, well, we can do that.
Yeah, I would. I mean, I, I think that would be a, a nice step to take and those guys have, I mean, they've got far more experience, I think, than we do. Yeah, there it is.
What does the board think about pursuing Charlene's suggestion of maybe... See, you have a condition in the planning board approval in 89.
Yeah.
It says there's to be no access along Depot. So if we were to come in here and ask for four spaces over here, what is, and that means you've got to give us relief from that condition. What's the board think about that? Or you'd rather have us go to police and fire first?
You know, Charlene, you're the town planner.
Well, I mean, that was one suggestion, you know, if they, without seeing some designs and some plans, but that was one suggestion that if there could be a, a, lack of a better word, better configuration of the building and parking,
Yep.
which would mean some kind of access from Depot, that might not be a bad thing. But without seeing a plan, it's, it's really hard to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I would also caution about having another curb cut that close to that intersection, which is a dangerous intersection. That close to the entrance and exit for Deerfield and then 20 or 30, 50 feet away, you've got another curb cut in and out of this property.
No question, Depot is busier than Deerfield.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, definitely.
That for people who use it as a cut through.
Well, you also have Stonewood Products right across, correct? It would be about across from where the building is.
They're busy.
They are busy.
That's just a tough intersection. That's a tough lot and...
Would you be able to do something like to keep your total square footage? And I, I'm not sure where the setbacks are here, but sort of flip-flop it so your largest section is closer to Deerfield and your smaller section is closer to Depot? And that might free up, I don't know, 15 spaces that you could park along Depot as you go in there?
Well, we're really bound, Craig, by the front setback off of Deerfield.
Right.
And that's a zoning thing that you probably, if you went there, you'd have to go to ZBA and get relief in the form of variance, which would be unusual.
Well, you certainly have a unique shaped lot there.
That's a tough, yeah.
So...
Mary?
Just one other, throwing everything at the wall to see if anything sticks. If you had an ingress from Depot where people could pull in, could you do a situation like a, if you're doing bays there, could you do a situation like the fire stations do and you have, you have drive-through bays? So that you could have them come in Depot but not exit through Depot? You could come in through...
Ingress.
In through, in from Depot and then exit onto, onto Deerfield.
So have ingress here, access here and egress here.
I just, I just don't know whether it would, yeah, I don't know whether it works. It's just another thought.
I, just looking at that, you're, you're putting another curb cut even though it's ingress closer to the intersection, which is...
We can look at that with our, with our engineer and see what we think.
It was just one other.
It's a good suggestion, good thought.
I'd just be concerned about people coming, is that south on Depot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
South on Depot from the intersection, trying to turn left into the egra, ingress of that building, having cars pile up behind them because that, Depots are pretty...
Crossing traffic.
It's just, at least you'd only have one, one way of traffic coming in.
Yeah, I understand the point.
And frankly, if this building goes all to storage, none of this will be...
Right, wouldn't even be...
Right. And, and I think there's a, there's a lot of room around there for further, at least some small development, right? I mean, you look at those other spaces. There's some boat storage up there at the...
Yeah, those aren't supposed to be there.
Yeah, they're just random.
Yeah.
Just kind of stop and drop your...
If I might, while, while we got you here, can you please clean up that corner?
Which corner? We cleaned up huge over there.
I know, but the last time I drove by there, there was an old trailer camper pallet, pile of pallets.
Just, just saying, the pallet for sale thing is on the town's property. It's in the right of way, it's not on our property. But the other things, we've cleaned that all up. You should take a ride out.
Do we know who's piling the pallets up?
I have no idea, but, but, no, you, you had mentioned that to me in a letter years ago.
Yeah.
Then we went out and looked at it and those, that pallet nonsense is within the right of ways, actually not on our property. But we have cleaned up the campers and the boats and all of that.
Okay.
Yeah. All that is, all that you see there is gone.
All the stuff up top.
All those boats are gone. And the ones lower part are gone.
It was the guy across the street, wasn't it?
Carl's boat, Carl's boat here.
Dumping stuff.
Yeah, we got after him hard, you know, he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
So hard to land on him.
Been there a long time.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
In the right, if I may, Mr. Chair, the right of way goes under the trees, correct?
It's in the shadow of the tree.
Yeah, it's in the shadow.
He goes out.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well... Any further comments from the board? David, Mary?
None for me.
Craig, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Charlene?
Nope.
So we have some homework and we'll do, do that and we'll come back to see you.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks very much. This is a good idea, by the way, just coming in.
Yeah.
Right now, we actually don't have a provision for this and past boards and board members, even going back to when I was here back in 2000, were not overly receptive to having an applicant in before they made a formal application. Board members didn't want to comment. Kind of, to me, it's kind of like a preliminary subdivision. The board approves a preliminary subdivision, doesn't mean the board's going to approve the definitive subdivision. It's just...
Well, there...
It's just conversation and ideas, so...
There are approving and then there is improving.
Right.
So, I'd like to think we're going to improve, right?
We really appreciate your time and the way of an informal discussion. It gives us good guidance.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year, all, all the best.
I hope Santa's good to you.
You too.
Okay. So next, we have the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on January 7th to discuss the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Yes. In talking with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen,
Yep.
I happened to be in a meeting with Chris and Julie Kavanaugh popped in
Yep.
and asked where we were and I told her and she goes, "Can we please meet as soon as possible so that we don't lose momentum?"
Yep.
And I said, "Well, the board hopefully will be, not voting, but kind of coming to a consensus at tonight's meeting." And she said, "Can we get this on the 7th?" And I said, "Well, I'll definitely bring it to, to you all," so...
And I think we'll have a lot of, a lot of attention from some of the businesses around town too, so... Yeah, we've, I think we've all gotten a little nudge on this one, Charlene.
Yep. What I don't, I'm not even going to put this up. So what you do have, I handed out a unreadlined copy to make it easier to read and a redlined copy. So, we were pretty much at consensus with what Town Council had recommended. The one item that was asked to be looked at shows up now as a new item five. But if you had the opportunity to read Town Council's email that he sent,
Yes.
he did comment that, and I also sent you a court case that he had linked to a court case, which I found fascinating.
That was really interesting.
But basically, in simple terms, what it said is that even if a town doesn't explicitly say that short-term rental is prohibited, the lack of language saying it's prohibited can mean it's prohibited. It's all in the interpretation. And I know this, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, there was a Airbnb on a private road and it was a, a joint access driveway for a couple houses that had, I believe, come through this board to get a waiver or a special permit to have alternative access. And the house at the end, beautiful house, beautiful location, they were operating an Airbnb. And the amount of traffic, and I think it was three different rooms in the home, might have been two. And the, and the, you know, the person who owned it lived there. And the traffic was just driving the, the neighbors just nutty. It was just too much traffic. So the building commissioner said, "This is not an allowable use" and she did shut it down. You know, to the one-night, two-night type rental. I don't think we're necessarily talking because historically, you know, people, for a variety of reasons, rent their house a week, two weeks, a month during the summer months. And, and typically, that's okay, as long as you don't have way too many people in the house, you know. But that's more a border health issue or a police matter if it's, if it's heavily occupied. So anyway, so I did ask Town Council, Adam Costa, to write up some language relative to short-term. And he did do that and it does appear as item number five in this proposed bylaw. But he also did say that, you know, nowhere else are you limiting short-term rental, so, or speaking to it. And if we do put it in here, does that mean that other places can have short-term rental? So I did put it in, doesn't mean I'm sold on keeping it in, but, you know, I'm a little concerned based on, you know, some of the conversation through email that I had with him, that if we do flag one thing and not other things, that that could be a problem in the future. So, you know, he said, "Certainly, I'm happy to give you language, but do you really need it?" And that was the only standout, I do believe. We made all the other changes. Mary had asked me earlier today, when I saw her, which is now item number six, we left the language not duly exercised in accordance with mass general law so that if it goes, you know, from two years to three years, which it is now three years, if it goes to five years, we don't have to change anything. So whatever the board's pleasure is. But really, the new number five was really the one that was outstanding at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, sir.
Charlene, did you say when you started that if it is, if the language, if it's not clearly prohibited in the bylaw?
Or permitted.
But, okay.
Yeah.
Then by... Okay, that might change.
Yeah, by virtue of the fact that it's not listed as a permitted use,
It is then...
It's a prohibited use, right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, I should have added, yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Yep. My faux pas.
You...
Sir.
With regard to item number five?
Yes, sir.
For duration of less than...
You'd need to... You'd need to fill in that blank.
And what do you think it should be filled in as?
Um, in my opinion, nothing. I, I, I don't believe we need item number five in there, but that's just my opinion. Particularly based on the, the, uh, the case, Land Court case that Council, um, provided, and his additional comments, which I did share with you, I believe it was yesterday, I forwarded that email to everybody. So, I'm not so certain that item number five is, is necessary. But I leave that to you, and I leave the amount of time to you as well. Other communities have used thirty days.
Short-term rentals are just prohibited?
Under our current bylaw, they, they are.
Okay.
So, under, under zoning, and it's what Attorney Costa had said in, in his, um, in his letter.
Yep.
If it's not permitted, it's automatically prohibited by the virtue of being silent. So, that being the case, I'd like to see us take out number five, then it's automatically prohibited, and we don't run into trouble because we talk about it here in a zoning ordinance, but don't talk about it anyplace else in a zoning ordinance. So then, so I think to his point, then are you opening a can of worms because you mentioned it one place, but you didn't carry it throughout? So does it mean it's actually, because you said it's prohibited here, and you didn't say it was prohibited someplace else, then are you actually saying it's authorized? So, I, I tend to think we're better off just taking it out.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
And just to clarify, that is also Attorney Costa's legal recommendation, or?
He, he just pointed out the pros and the cons.
Yeah, okay.
And I think the cons, in my opinion, outweigh the pros. That, exactly what Mary just said. By, by having language in this bylaw, in this bylaw only, does it then lend itself that it's, oh, no, then it's okay other places?
Anybody who ever thought about how a Airbnb would be?
Well, a bed and breakfast is an allowable use with a special permit.
I'm sorry, I meant, uh.
Yeah, but an Airbnb is, yeah.
Yeah. But this is an accessory apartment.
Right. And I think that, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the purpose and intent, and that was something else he brought up, the fact that it's supposed to be for, um, let me get the language here. Um, increase the number of small dwelling units available for rent in town, increase the range of choice of housing accommodation, encourage greater diversity. So in your purpose,
Yep.
you know, it's really saying what, what you want it to be used for.
This would not apply if someone owned a single-family home, they worked in Boston, say, and they came down on weekends, that they could rent that house out during the week for the four or five days, if they're not gonna, this doesn't have any impact on that.
No, and, and typically, we see the longer short-term rental, for lack of a better word, where somebody may rent their home out from Saturday to Saturday, or Friday to Friday, or, or what have you.
Monday to Friday.
Yeah. So, I mean, for the most part, you know, you, you don't hear a lot about that, cause it is traditional, especially in tourist areas. Um, but whereas this is intended for, you know, longer-term rental, this is for somebody to, to reside in. Uh, to be their home.
Right.
If I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, passing through to Charlene. Didn't, when we were, started talking about this last year, I don't remember whether it was, whether it was when you were back on as our planner, if Ally was still here, I thought we were, we had toyed with putting a, putting language in that it was for no less than six months. Did I miss that? Or have we, is that not in this one? We didn't put this, that in.
That may have been in earlier language.
We talked about it at one point.
Yeah, that may have been in earlier language. Yeah.
I think that was.
And I mean, if that's, if that is something, you know, you take, you would take out number five altogether.
Right.
And, um, and you would add that to item number, I'm gonna find it here.
And I don't know that it's necessary. I, I think we had originally talked about it to encourage year-round residency in the accessory, to increase year-round residency stock as opposed to.
Right, right.
And then we had chosen as the board just not to make any changes last year.
Oh, item, um, four C, only one of the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented at any given time. That's where you would want to have for no less than six months, consecutive months. If you wanted to do some kind of language there, that might be more appropriate, in my opinion, than item number five.
Is that something you suggest, Mary?
And maybe that's something you talked to, I'm sorry, maybe talk to the Selectmen about that.
That was gonna be my question. Is the, Mr. Chair, is our intent to have a, a final draft advertised for the Board of Selectmen?
No, 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 no.
Okay, we're still at a discussion.
This is still working.
Then, then I'd say, see what their recommendation is, when you have, you know.
That's fair.
Yeah, do you want item number five taken out though, or do you wanna leave it in and have that discussion with them at, on the seventh? I, it, it's whatever the, the board is, is comfortable doing.
As far as my colleagues.
Craig?
I would suggest take it out, and if, if it's raised by somebody on the board, we can aggressively.
Honestly, I am too. I wanted to hear what you all had to say, but I think it's a good point.
Just take it out.
But I think the six month is not necessarily a bad thing.
No.
And if, and if that is something that the board wanted to do, it, I, you know, it makes sense to put it in item four C.
You could, you could add that as a recommendation or as a preference.
Um, what I can do is put it in perens
Yeah.
as note, further discussion on.
Yes.
And just say, so, uh, only one principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented at any given time for no less than six consecutive. Cause if you say six months, it's a month here, a month there.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's necessary or not, um, I just know we had talked about it at one point, and I don't know if it's worth putting it in or leaving it out. Well, a six-month.
Six months.
Minimum rental on the accessory apartment.
Or the main house.
Yep.
Or the main house.
If, if it's in perens, it'll be a point of discussion, right?
Yep.
So we'll, if that works, Mary, we'll just, we'll bring it up.
It's fine with me. I mean, it has pros and cons either way, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Just to clarify, the meeting on the seventh with the Selectmen is not a public hearing or anything like that?
No, just a public meeting.
Informational.
Yep.
Does the audience get to participate, or?
That's up to the chairman of either board.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we have a, a lot of people here that would like to weigh in, I don't, why not?
Phone, just so you, phone participation at a Selectmen's meeting is really difficult.
I, I, I wouldn't be available by phone anywhere.
Okay, okay.
Driving.
Okay, yeah. Not to exclude anybody, but it's just, it's very difficult at a Selectmen's meeting, just so many moving parts. So is the board good with me taking five out, adding this as, okay, cool.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all good.
Very good.
Good discussion.
Uh.
So, into old business, Charlene?
Yeah, that, we have no further discussion on item number two, which is the accessory apartment versus bedroom. So that, remember I had done the agenda so early?
Yep.
That just never came off.
Yep.
So sign code is next for the freestanding portable signs.
Yeah, we've.
Can I do a big kudos to David, who came up with, I, I think, some very good language, and really kinda streamlined it better. Um, I think it flows better, I think it's easier to follow. Sometimes you get caught in the weeds, and I was definitely caught in the weeds, so. I appreciate.
It's a.
It's hard to read the sign when you're, when it's in the weeds.
Yeah.
Exactly.
This is, this is, this is the beauty of getting people to work to their strengths and contributing, so.
Yep.
Thank you, David, very much for the help.
And we did say on J- on January eighth, that we would, uh, work with Cindy Williams, the, um, Director of the Chamber, to reach out to, um, members of the Chamber and, and everybody that we can think of business-wise. Cause this, as we said at the last meeting, this doesn't just affect Harwich Port. This is town-wide for all businesses.
So we're gonna meet with those folks on the eighth?
On the eighth, they're gonna be invited to a discussion. You have a, um, you do have one public hearing that night for a special permit.
Yep, and that's it.
That should be a very quick matter before this board.
Okay.
Um, and then it'll be available for, I think, a good discussion. And I certainly wouldn't put a whole lot more on that agenda, um, so that we can, you know, you all can have a good discussion with, with whoever shows.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to clarify, and you and I discussed this briefly on the phone, and that is, you had mentioned in our last meeting that no, no signs are permitted on public or private sidewalks.
Please clarify that, yes, yes.
And, and when you sent me the provisions on which that was based, it says, uh, find which one, uh, no sign should be located in a public right-of-way, nor shall they be located so as to block a public or private sidewalk. Doesn't say they can't be there, it says they can't block them.
Exactly, right, right.
That's a, in my view, a much different provision.
Yes.
Because all the current ones are on sidewalks.
Correct, that's right.
But as.
But that's different than.
And, and actually, a, a good example is, um, the Nines, the Nines Art Gallery.
Yes.
That sidewalk is extremely wide, right there. And, uh, they have been putting out on easels, um, some of their artwork, and I think a chair or a bench or something. It's right up against the building, right up against, towards their entrance. So, you know, that may not be a bad thing, as long as nobody's stumbling into them. I mean, if somebody stumbles into them, that's, you know, um, that's the Nines' problem. You know, it's their concern, not the person who might've bumped into them.
So we have someone from the audience who'd like to weigh in.
Wasn't going to, but since you're all looking at me, probably should get up, right? Um, as we talked about earlier, the last time we were all together, it was a little bit different, so now this is good to hear that we're gonna change it, or that it can go like that, like, um, Charlene just mentioned, the Nines. We also have Cranberry Jewelers. So as long as it's close to their building and not in
The main solid traffic.
the way, right, then it should be fine.
Yeah.
If I may too, I think in front of the Nines, isn't there a tree there?
Yes, there is. There's a tree.
I think they typically put it near the tree as well, so nobody's gonna walk through the tree, so the tree's already impeding the walkway, so.
On a good day, no, 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 walk into the tree.
I mean, we all have our moments.
Yeah. An, an ADA compliant sidewalk has to be a minimum of four feet wide.
Yes.
We prefer five feet, so that two people can pass. So as long as that's not being, you know, it's some of the sidewalks, though, in Harwich Port are, I don't even think are four feet wide.
There are some that do get tricky, but I think the sidewalks that really, these are going to affect, I think we can work with the space that's allotted there.
But the signs have to be on your own property.
Yep.
That's the key.
Okay.
You can't have a sign on state layout, on town property, so, yeah.
Charlene, is that something that we could have, just in case some of the people that are here on January eighth, say, are renters of the property that their store or business is in? Have just something like a little cheat sheet for them to say, okay, well, this building is, the state property is here, so like, I mean, you know what I'm saying, just some kind of a guideline, so in case they question, we'll kinda have it, so.
Actually, I'm actually gonna bring a map up.
Okay.
If I can.
So we've got, we've got two folks that want, Craig, go ahead.
Right along those lines, but if you could read the last item that you read again, which I think specified different from what we thought before, was prohibited on public and private sidewalk, and now prohibited on public sidewalk, but permitted.
It doesn't say they can't be on them.
It, there's another provision that says it cannot be on town or state property. You can't have a sign, yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where, where I was going with this, or the reason for the question is, um, I would like to have, especially for this meeting on the eighth, the documents that we refer to out, outside of this, that we're referencing that say, because I've asked this question a number of meetings, where's the dividing, where's the line of demarcation between public, state, whatever the right terminology is, and private? Because if I heard correctly, now we believe on private, it is allowed as long as it's not blocking, whatever the language is, you know, a way.
And that's subject to interpretation. How do you define blocking the sidewalk?
Right, right. Mary has waited patiently here, so go ahead.
I'll just, through you, Mr. Chair, take the opportunity to say, the, I think the enforcing officer can, the building inspector can probably, would be charged with that determination, whether it's blocking or not, right? And the layout is what the layout is, and somebody's deed is gonna reference where the layout is of the state highway, any town land. The assessor's map may or may not show it. But, but I would also say, in general, a right, what, what's referring to a right-of-way, the right-of-way being the sidewalk or a street layout, you can't do anything on that right-of-way without a permit from the town. So, I know with past municipalities that I've worked for, you couldn't put a, the federal government couldn't put a mailbox on the sidewalk without coming to the city council to get a permit to place a box in the right-of-way. The electric company, the telephone company have to come for pole permits in order to place telephone poles in the right-of-way, and the awnings that overhang a right-of-way, same kind of requirement. So I think it's appropriate for a sign board to do the same thing if it's anywhere near a way.
All signs, except for exit, entrance, those kinda things, require a sign permit.
Yes.
So if somebody's gonna put up one of these freestanding portable signs, they need to come to the building department and pull a permit and show where it's gonna be located on their property.
Yes.
So they're gonna have to, I mean, the best I can do is look at a Google map and go, well, it looks like, but without a plot plan, and we don't have plot plans for all these properties. So, you know, I, it's hard for me to.
So, to kinda play devil's advocate on it and to prepare all of us for January eighth and the different people that will be here. Can we, and this, I'm throwing it out, and it's putting more on you and I kinda thing, but, I know.
Thanks.
We're like this little dynamic duo here. Can we maybe take the time to just kinda take this and say, okay, this, and then on a little piece of paper, say, okay, five sixty-four Route twenty-eight, you can have your sign right here. And then, just so then, when they're all here, and because we want this going into the next season, to not have any of the hiccups that we were having, say, okay, this is what you can have, if you're going to do this, and you're going to follow all the procedures, getting the permit and everything else that they're gonna need, but this, if you're gonna do it, this is where you can do it. Kinda have that guideline that, this is the only way you can, we want you to be able to, we're here to help.
Certain, oh, sorry.
So we have a couple of folks here, but one question that I'd like everybody to weigh in on is, if we have, or do we have anyone who has their full forty-eight square feet and cannot have?
Oh, we've got a bunch of people.
So they, we do have some who can't, right?
Well, we, we have people who have way more than forty-eight square feet of signage, and, because they don't have permits for all their signs. And we actually have a young man who's helping us out, um, this fall, um, tomorrow's first day of winter, so I can say winter too.
Yep.
Um, who actually has gone up and down Route twenty-eight and taken photographs of every single sign that is out right now. So there are signs that aren't gonna be there. So there are some businesses that need to come into compliance with the sign code.
So, so, should we, should we only be speaking with the people who are, who have 48 square feet or less?
When somebody comes in for a sign permit, we look at what they have for signage. And if they have more than what is allowable, or if they have signs that aren't permitted, we're not gonna give them a permit for a sign.
For an A, for an A-frame?
For an A-frame, and we will, we would put them on notice to say, you far exceed your allowable signage, you, you need to come into compliance.
Okay, so we should, we should be prepared to make those sorts of statements, if you will? Just to provide guidance and to be fair, right? Now, who was first?
Mary's always-
Mary, Mary.
You're so kind. I just have a hard time with, to me, with this board kind of giving that guidance where we're not the sign-off authority. The building inspector's the sign-off authority. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on my, waving my hands in the air. I, I don't wanna put us in a position where we're interfering with the building inspector or we're giving bad advice. So, so, it's one thing to, it's one thing to give suggestions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's why, if I were to give an example, I would take an existing site plan that we already have.
Yep.
And show that and say, okay, here's a site plan where we know where the property line is, we know where the sidewalk is, we know where the road is. Here's the area where you could have a sign, and just leave it at that.
So here's, here's a-
Or you have no room for a sign.
I mean, I, I think, if I, if I may, I, I think we've got to have this meeting with the building inspector, right?
Yeah, he was not able to be here tonight.
He couldn't be here this evening, right?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, there's, there's a set of rules, and then there's the process for following them and enforcing them and applying them. If you cite an example, as you described a few minutes ago, Charlene, that may be the only place where that example applies, because there's so many-
Oh, exactly, oh.
diverse conditions that are being-
Absolutely.
So the way I see this working is, I see the rule, okay, now I gotta find out where I can put the sign. So here's, they come to the building inspector with the permit application and said, no, I don't know how to apply all these rules. I understand them, I understand what they're saying, but I don't know how to apply them, because I don't know where all the lines are. Can you help me with that? That's the only way somebody can follow these rules in a rational and fair way.
So, so I think this is a pretty darned good document to pass along.
I, like I said, kudos to David.
Kudos to David.
Listen, I, I took what you started with and what I thought you intended, and, and then went back and forth between you and me a couple of times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully, but a real test of this is to have somebody that didn't write it, read it, and see how, see if, if this, if something can be misinterpreted, it will be. So let's try to-
That's the truth.
So I, I think we've got, we've got a couple of things really going for us. We've got a document, right, that's pretty darned good. I mean, somebody will shoot some holes in it, I'm sure, but whatever.
And it will still say draft on it, I need to put draft.
Yep, it's got, it's gotta have draft on it. I think the, the other way to make this successful is to, is to have the building inspector at this next meet. I mean, we really can't have, it's contingent upon his, his presence, right? Mary, Mary?
I think he needs to hear the conversation, if nothing else.
Yeah.
I think he should, can be in a position to hear the conversation, but again, I wouldn't want him to comment on anything that's like not in an application yet, because-
Absolutely, I, I couldn't agree more, sorry to interrupt.
He's putting him on the spot for no reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, but.
Yeah, Craig?
I think that this is a great document, and it's getting where we need to be, but I, I feel, I would feel uncomfortable going before the business people the way this is worded right now. And if we know something is specifically prohibited, like, I don't care what size or what it looks like or anything, but it's prohibited on, whatever the right terminology, the public sidewalk, maybe we don't say that as part of the bylaw, but as part of our meeting, you know, tick off what we know is factual. And to Dave's point, if somebody says, well, I own Cranberry Jewelers, where can I put my sign on whenever we're meeting the eighth? Where our answer, we better know what our answer is. That's not for us to decide. The rule says you can have it on whatever the right language is, personal sidewalk, as long as it's not impeding, and that you need to go to the business, or, sorry, to the, the proper parties in Town Hall to get the permit and find that out. We don't set that. And also, not to get ahead of ourselves, but also, let's just say, sandwich boards are not permitted, period and a sentence. And define sandwich board. I mean, if that, that's what I heard a couple of weeks ago, that, that's what the attorney said, we don't have to discuss it because it's not permitted, so let's, tell them right up front.
They, there's a definition for A-frame signs. And within the sign code itself, it says, all signs require, except for some that are exempt, require a sign permit. The problem is, nobody's ever getting a sign permit for their A-frame signs. And they're putting them in sidewalks, and they're having five of them, and, you know, that-
I think the next thing that we could maybe do, and maybe I can do this part so it doesn't put you guys up, what Mary was saying, I can get with the building inspector and just sit with him and say, okay, we're having this meeting January 8th. Can I just have some guidelines? So if any of the business members ask the questions, I'll know how to even answer it. So then it kinda falls on me, so then takes you, does that help?
I just wanna have as, as much information as we know factual-
Because what's gonna happen is, these guys are gonna be here, a lot of them then will go away for the, you know, winter months, then they'll come back and have to do all this. At least that we have the grocery list for them of what they have to work with. Okay, when you get back in March, this is what you have to do if you're gonna have a sign. So.
And here's what you can have.
So it-
Are you gonna bring Mr. Hurst with you?
This is going to be opened up to any of the members. So I think we need to look at who has been grandfathered and who has not, and know all the facts.
Yes.
Going into the January 8th.
Everything we're talking about. And then think about the kite job.
Yeah.
With stuff all over the side.
And I just heard the word grandfathered, if we know, if we, if we know that certain businesses or sidewalks or whatever are grandfathered-
Right now, unless you have a permit for an A-frame sign, 'cause you're required to, you are not grandfathered.
You're not in compliance.
Yeah, you're out of compliance.
So I think for any businesses that have been in existence for a while, we need to just look at what they're, what they've got and what they can have. And leave it at that for right now.
Can I read something from the bylaw?
Yes, ma'am.
You read, you asked for the last part to be, but item number F under 325-26.
Dot F.
Says 36 on what you sent me, but you mean 26.
Yeah, yeah. "No sign shall be located in a public right-of-way. Nor shall they be located as to block a public or private sidewalk." So right there, "No sign shall be located in a public right-of-way."
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if I'm the business owner sitting back there, I'm gonna say, what does a public right-of-way mean, Charlene? Where is it in front of my building?
You, they, they, just like with, just like with any other permit that somebody applies for, they need to provide us a plan. We can't-
So that would be our answer, I just wanna make sure that-
We, we can't guess on where things go.
I think it's a good question, really, because what, what we have to, we have to be kind of tuned in to what, what is or isn't permitted, right? And, and I, and I think it's a, it's a teaching session and a learning session at the same time, so.
And especially, Jim, too, with the new buildings and stuff, and the new businesses that are coming in. I mean, we have a new business coming in to the old Monahan Jewelers. They're gonna maybe wanna know. So I think if we treat it that way, that's the best way. Is this is a learning exercise for everybody. So if your business, you know, wants to do these kind of things, this is the brainstorming session for you.
Right.
Do you know what that business is gonna be?
I do, Joe.
What is it?
Murphy's General Store, and I'm actually meeting with them this week after Christmas.
What happens in the general store?
I don't know yet, but I'll find out. Generally-
They cannot prepare food.
Murphy's Law.
They can have prepackaged food, they cannot prepare food.
Right now, instead of, you know, assuming what it's gonna be, I am meeting with them either the 26th or 27th, so then we'll know.
I saw the sign, I just wanted-
Look, I think this is, this is another good idea, Cindy. I, you know, we, we're gonna have a session here, maybe we won't all agree. I'm sure there'll be some disagreement, but we're gonna get everybody kind of on the same page, right?
Just like anything, you know, we're all here between the partnership that the Chamber has with the town to make sure that businesses know that we all want them in town, and it's a good community to have their business in. So this is a great way to show that, I think.
And if I might, when we had the, the meeting last spring before the season really opened, and we talked about liquor licenses, we talked about a couple of things, we talked about signage. We talked specifically about A-frame signs with the folks who attended. And they were put on notice that if they had signs that were not permitted or that were on sidewalks, they would be removed.
But did we?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
If you have it and you enforce it, then it means something.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they were, they were picked up this past summer.
Okay, I think we've got a, we've got a pretty good start here. This document says what it's gotta look like or what it can't look like.
This is great, I read this through, thank you, David.
And the last line says, tells you where you can put it. And if there's a question, the building code official essentially makes the determination.
Right, I mean, we, their staff member, I mean, if somebody comes to me, and if I can find a site plan, and it may even be a septic plan, it's like, ooh, hey, we know where the building is, we know where the sidewalk is. This is where you can have it. You know, each, we need to look at each and every parcel separately. Because it's the only way you can do it.
And we started this, too, it's not just Harwich Port. So, you know, every, you know, all the almost 400 members of the Chamber will be invited. That includes all seven villages. So we don't know who's gonna come. So certainly, we could have someone from South Harwich, Pleasant Lake, West Harwich. So each one, you know, is gonna be the same rule. You know, it's just like having seven children. Each one gets the same rule.
Okay.
I just-
Joe?
One last thing, the new building downtown, I mean, as I listened to this discussion tonight, he may have, he may have to break up some of that sidewalk.
That one we need to look at, 'cause I was looking at that the other night when I was down visiting my daughter next door. And I wanna go back and look at it again to see how close, 'cause they may, they may be okay if it's right close to that window where the front doors are, that this would work, but I don't know, I gotta look at it again closer.
Seems like to me it's too big, that sidewalk.
I think that'll work in its favor then, for the signage.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, David?
Yeah, I, I think, remembering what Charlene said during the last meeting, that you can't put a sign, sign board on a private sidewalk is not the case.
Right.
But if it's-
But, but it can't block that private sidewalk.
Exactly.
So we need a definition. Where's the, where's the private sidewalk? Because if they left that grass, it wouldn't be a private sidewalk. They elected to pave it.
Does it become?
Conway and, and the insurance company puts benches out in front of theirs, and that's the paved area.
Until we have a plot plan or a plan of the property, I, I can't say, building commissioner can't say.
Well, I think we need to, somehow, can we get that in the message, Cindy? If they came with a plan?
No, not, not at the meeting.
Not at this one, no.
Looking at individual properties, this is only a discussion.
Yeah, and plus, too, we're, it's open to so many, and we don't know who exactly. That can be a later thing that even, you know, we can do, you know, on a case-to-case, yeah. Just help, guide them along.
I, I think, I, look, the message, the message, I believe, that's coming from us is we want you to, we want you to understand there are a few rules, there's some guidance. We wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. And there's no grandfathering, this is permitting. And, and, and let's work together, because this business that we're doing is good for Harwich, right? So, uh, Mary?
And this message isn't just coming from us either, it's coming from the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes, and we'll let them, we'll let them know about meeting.
With looking at it, too, so, I mean, it's not just us being bad guys.
That's right.
No, 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 no.
Actually, you're trying to be the good guys, trying to figure out something that's not right.
So the people get into compliance.
And even the message the other night with the selectmen on other things, too, for the businesses, everyone's trying to do it so that we're all supporting the businesses, because we are very much in support of how wonderful the town has flourished. So this is just another way for us, again, giving the businesses the tools they need to be successful.
We, we, and we want people to come here and have fun, and have a place to go and get things they may not get other places, so.
And want to come here.
And wanna come here, right. Craig?
Mr. Chairman? I think if we approach it, as, as everyone has just said, that really our motivation, I, I see our motivation as twofold. One is to work with the businesses as much as we can to encourage them to thrive and bring more business in and everything that, that means. Balanced by the safety to the residents and visitors to Harwich. So I think, I mean, it's pretty hard, I guess it isn't hard, but should be hard to argue against safety from my persp, my limited perspective. But I think if we highlight, you know, those are our motivations here. It's all good, what's the downside? You know, we're not trying to restrict anything or be the bad guy. We're trying to be the good guy, make sure everybody understands what the rules are so everybody can be in compliance.
The only, the only downside to this is to get so many people interested that we really don't have any parking, right? But that's another reason.
Don't go there.
Please don't go there.
Is, it, have we, have we beaten this, signs and frames and things?
I think it's dead for tonight.
Yeah.
Good job.
I'd suggest that, and retaining walls?
Retaining walls, so I made the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. Hopefully, this version dated the 17th reflects that.
Yes. Everybody wanna take a minute to glance at this?
And at this point, I'm not suggesting that you vote to forward any of these to the selectmen. I'd rather have you do it as a bunch.
When I, I'm looking at it again, I don't see anything here particularly surprising or problematic.
I have a question.
Sir?
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Is there, what's the current lot line setback for a mounted septic system?
There is none, and they've been having to go to the zoning Board of Appeals for variances.
I see, okay.
That was the whole idea behind this, yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anything else on this?
I think Mary's got something.
Mary?
So my follow-up is, so then if somebody can't get a mounted system in without a 10-foot setback?
They can still go to the zoning Board of Appeals.
They can still go to the zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes.
So we're not really taking the right away from them to be able to do that. We're just putting it in writing.
We're trying to make it a little bit easier, 'cause 10 feet is the, the code setback for septic.
Yes.
So we use that as the, that number.
So if they were with less than 10 feet, they have to get a variance.
Yep, so if somebody wanted to squeeze a four-bedroom in, and they didn't have the 10 feet, but they could get it into eight, they could go to zoning Board of Appeals and get a variance?
Yes.
Yeah.
And request the eight.
And they'd also need a variance from the Board of-
Right, 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 right.
So this isn't particularly restrictive?
No, I think-
No, this is, this is actually helping people.
I think so.
Yeah.
Any, any further comments or discussion?
Okay.
I think we're good.
Very good, I'm still working on the building height one in the floodplain, so I will continue to work on that and get that back to you. I have to look back at my notes and see what it was that you guys wanted in the first place that I, that I look at, so.
It is floodplain, P-L-A-I-N, instead of plan.
Yes.
Floodplain.
You don't like floodplam?
Well.
And funny thing is, that's been on the agenda for the last three agendas, and nobody caught it.
We didn't talk about it.
I saw it before, I just, first time I had a chance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Charlene, one of the things that I did ask about was a, adding a ma- or putting in a maximum height.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have thirty feet now, but, I don't know, four, whatever, is that something that-
Oh, that was one thing, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's a good point. Let's see.
And I'm gonna do ask Craig, in case I go, what does that note mean?
Yep.
You expect me to remember past a nice-
Hey, you did.
No, that was, that was really good, Craig, I mean.
You remembered better than I did.
Can't tell you what else. Briefings, are we okay to go to briefings and reports by board members? I think we've got, we, we spoke earlier.
Did you got Mary?
Yes, I was just gonna say, give you a quick update on CPC.
Perfect.
Um, it is, we met last week and heard the last four applications, so we will meet, I believe it's January-
Tenth.
Thank you, January tenth, to kind of have a full discussion, some follow-up on the eight applications, uh, if anyone's interested, it's, should be six PM, um-
Yep.
-that Thursday here in this room. Um, as I said, there are only eight applications this, this go around, so we don't have, um, we haven't been meeting excessively, we've been meeting once a month.
Yep.
So.
Question I asked earlier, um, if your board decides to grant them all, you have enough money?
It looked like we did. The only question is, um, the application that came in originally from the Brooks Academy trustees. It doesn't look like, he had originally asked for, I think, a hundred and thirty thousand.
For the sidewalk?
No, this was for, um, to move a doorway, to put in an elevator.
Basement renovations.
Basement renovations in the Brooks Academy Museum, um, so that they could deal with some storage issues, um, and at the time, he put in for a hundred and thirty, and that's really not enough to do the three items, it was enough to do one, um, and there was some question as to whether, um, whether the, the one made sense, so I'm not sure what, whether he's gonna attempt to, to revise his application or not, but, um, that's the only caveat I'd say on the, the amount of the money.
You might.
We, we-
You might want to tell them.
Oh, no, they did.
No, yeah, no.
There's all kinds of space under the community center.
No, 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 don't go there.
No, but, um, it's, because, because they were still working on the community center, I think, they were building a vault in there, um, on last year's application.
Right, and, and the vault is not gonna be as large as we anticipated to properly store everything that we wanted to store there.
But I think they had, um, I think, I think Brooks Academy was looking at, I think they have storage on the second floor, and they also were looking to add some storage in the basement, so there were some questions, they had just done a, a survey with the money they had from an earlier round of CPC funding, so I think there was a question as to what was next for them, and the application, uh, timing probably wasn't, uh, ideal with trying to figure out what their next step is, so I, my caveat on the how much money we have, yes, with the original applications, yes, we had enough money, if he's asked for more, um, then I'm not sure that we, that we technically have enough, um, for everything, but, um, next round is January tenth, and we'll may start voting, um, we had agreed to meet back-to-back weeks in January, so, because warrant articles are due the beginning of February, we think, so, uh, we'd have to vote pretty quick in January to get him, to get them done, and get the warrant articles to the selectmen for the warrant.
Okay.
So, that's the only update there.
Okay. Joe, any update?
No.
No, Craig, anything?
Charlene Hint- or Elaine sent around electronically the citizens planner training on-
I'm sure she did, but that's okay.
What? Charlene did it.
Oh, sorry, Charlene did it. Planning with community support that I had referenced previously, it's pretty goo- I thought it was pretty good about-
It is good.
-community meetings, and I mentioned, I think in the last meeting, that I had attended the Hartford Center Initiative meeting, and, um, referenced this, so if it's okay, I would forward it to-
Yeah.
Their chairman, chairperson, if they want to distribute it.
Sure. Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
Thanks. David?
Any, any boards, any, anybody want to hear about my, uh, project in Florida, and condo?
No.
I have nothing.
No.
Do you have some work done down there?
So, just, um-
I have to have some work done.
A couple of things, um, we've got a couple of alternate positions, and now we have a full position, and if I'm not mistaken, Mary, we have a, a, we have to get somebody to-
A representative for the community preservation committee.
Yeah, c- community preservation, so.
To vote a replacement.
Has to come from this board.
Uh, traditionally, this board votes, um, for who we'd like our representative to be, and then it has to go to the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen confirm it, and then, uh, then the person can get sworn in, so it might be ideal to do it at